Will the city clerk please take the roll?
Paul Mary.
Here.
Mugerower.
Here.
Prozey.
Here.
Peck.
Herman.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Cummings.
Here.
Present five.
Would you please all stand while Deputy Mayor Palmary leads us in the invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
We are mindful of the blessings of liberty that we have in this nation. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now if our two students would come forward again, we have certificates for you. I appreciate you coming out tonight on a day when school was canceled, which I'm sure your staff will be. We'll turn the face that corner to get some folks. I'm going to ask you a couple questions. Your name, age, where you go to school, and your favorite son.
My name is Kaylee Brasky. I'm 10 years old, and I go to Warren Elementary, and my favorite subject is physics.
Okay, great. There's a certificate for you, and you can go home on that show or go home or stay here and watch me. Is that good? Thank you. (applause) Because of the weather, we're going to attempt to move this meeting along as smoothly and quickly as possible. The first, we do a presentation on the Aviation Business Plaza, Aviation Plaza redevelopment, and I believe the presenters have been advised they have 10 minutes, so the floor is all yours.
My name is Tim Hess. I'm a consultant with Investive Analytics. I've been asked to help out with Tyler Riley, the owner of Extreme Customs, and Tom Masters, the owner of the mine shaft down in Hartford, to consider the possibility of maybe getting some TIF assistance through the city of Oshkosh. So, as a college professor, I typically pride myself on taking the full amount of time. I will try my best to speed this up as quickly as I can. So, to that end, let's skip the first two pages here, and let's get right into it. First, going to talk about just overview of the site issues. So, the Aviation Plaza, I think we all know what it is. Bounded by 20th Ave and South Park, from north and south. On the left and right, we're on Highway 41 and South Kohler there. So, here is kind of the depiction of parcels that we're talking about here. In this case, we've got three different collections of parcels, I guess. The northernmost parcel is owned by Tom Masters. This is a 6.4 acre parcel that was vacated by Walmart back in 2003. There is roughly a 19,000 square foot building sitting on there that is vacant at the moment. The next one down to the south is roughly a 36 and 1/2 thousand square foot building that is owned by Pat Rogan and Rogan Shoe Store, and roughly 17,000 square feet of that building is sitting vacant right now, looking for somebody to potentially lease it. The third parcel is actually a collection of three parcels that is owned by Phoenix Realty LLC that incorporates the J.C. Penney Building, the Miles Kimball Building, and a very large parking lot, I guess. That one, Tyler Riley from Extreme Customs, has an offer to purchase on it right now that is contingent upon approval of a TIF. That is roughly 60,000 square foot building that, you know, the fair majority of that, J.C. Penney vacated back in 2015. So, that's kind of the overview of the parcels that we're talking about, Aviation Plaza and who's involved in it. So, I want to talk about site-specific issues. I think back in early December, some of the city staff brought up to you guys, there are some issues on this site that are going to need to be addressed regardless of who's coming in and doing something. So, the first issue is with storm water management. So, here's where you may want to watch the screen and not necessarily the abbreviated This yellow outline here is the boundary for the Stringham Creek watershed. It starts a little bit further southwest there on the other side of 41, but then it basically follows along South Park and ultimately dumps into the Fox River over by the Boatworks property. So, this is the watershed that we're dealing with in the storm water basin. And what we've been told by city staff is, look, there is this relatively large culvert going underneath Highway 41, and I think Steve Godey roughly suggested that might be around 60 inches, something relatively large. Don't know exactly what it is, but you get a bunch of water coming through there. And sitting on the site right now, there's some storm water management stuff. There's some ditches and stuff that is holding water, but what is being experienced right now is sometimes when we get heavy enough rains, on the other side of Kohler, to the south of 20th, we experience a lot of water building up in that area there. And there's some pretty deep ditches there, but even those ditches will sometimes have the driveways become flooded, or even the entirety of 20th Ave in that area gets flooded. Now, I, the graphics here are intended to show location. I'm not trying to make it bigger or smaller. I'm just trying to show the general facility here. So, here's the thing. The city has kind of said to these guys, look, collectively, you guys could choose to do storm water management on your individual parcels yourself, or you could choose to put it all together in one spot. But the fact that we're going in and doing some renovations means we've got to do something here. There's a lot of impervious surface. But what city staff has kind of suggested to us was, if we would consider potentially putting a little more on there than just what this particular, what these particular parcels are required, and help address some of the downstream issues, that maybe what we could do is something analogous to this, where we go bigger, but in so doing, potentially we could come up with an agreement with the city where some of the storm water could go on some of the city's land, too. So, it's an opportunity that I think city staff would say, they don't get a whole lot of chances to address these sort of issues, and they're looking at this saying, well, here's an opportunity where something's going in, maybe we can help deal with some of the issues. I think that's roughly what we're saying is going on. So, that's the storm water management issue. Next issue is water and sewer laterals. On this map, I have depicted in yellow the sewer laterals and I have depicted in blue the storm water laterals, though the laterals that run into the property, we would typically assume they're going to run with the sewer laterals, but the city's records don't necessarily depict exactly where they are, so we're making some assumptions here. In terms of the sewer laterals, things could be fine the way that they're sitting right here, as long as there are appropriate easements and agreements in place, this could be fine. However, if a triggering event, according to the Public Service Commission, happens, like Mr. Masters goes and does some substantial development in the northern parcel, or even a sale of a parcel, like the southern parcel to Mr. Riley, we would have to address and get the water laterals up to today's standards. And what that means is this, that every single individual building, or each building that is on a unique parcel, is going to be, have to be serviced by its own storm water lateral. So, that might look like then...
Drinking water.
Drinking water. I'm sorry. Drinking water. So, the drinking water would have to be served by its own lateral, and this is what it might look like then. Of course, that then kind of begs the question, well, if you're already going in there and digging to put in the drinking water, then maybe you do want to go in and put in some new sewer laterals at the same time, except the one downside for that is that the sewer laterals out in Kohler only come out to basically the northern portion of Hardee's. So, if they were going to do that, that could turn into a fairly large expense bringing the sewer laterals up to that site. But so, these are issues. If anybody goes in and does something, this is going to have to be addressed. Next issue is parking lots and driveways. You know, when we were doing the Granery Project a year and a half ago, I was shocked by when my colleague told me, hey, digging up an existing parking lot and putting on new base was actually going to be more expensive than putting in something brand-new. In this particular case, we got a lot of driveway, or a lot of parking lot that we got to deal with, and the existing driveways that are in there don't have aprons, so we're going to have to deal with that, too. Fourth issue on this particular site, Keller has noted in some of their costs that there's a geotechnical report that talks about soil conditions on that site. That's going to cost, I think it was $371,000, to deal with just that particular issue. So, that is another major expense that this site would have to deal with if somebody wanted to come in and do something there. The final thing that I put up there is zoning restrictions. You can see from the map where the airport is, where the runway. That causes some issues technically for what these guys are proposing. I don't believe that causes any issues, but in terms of thinking about if somebody else were to come in here, this would be a potential issue. All told, if we address this, and remember that middle parcel with Pat Rogan, here's a guy who might be facing a substantial amount of expense for doing nothing other than he was existing there, and all of a sudden his neighbors went and did something, and now he's going to have to deal with a lot of expense. If I encompass all three parcels, all the water laterals, all the things that I've been talking about here, we've got an estimate of roughly $2.5 million to $3 million to address this stuff. So, it's a fairly substantive amount to deal with this. So, let's move on to what we're proposing. Mr. Masters is proposing to put a mine shaft. He's got the Mine Shaft Restaurant and Entertainment Center down in Hartford. He's interested in putting one here. Here's the site plan of that northern parcel, where he's got roughly a 35,600 square foot building there and a fair amount of parking there. Here is the actual building footprint, and if you look, there's roughly 15,000 square feet of game room, 7.6 thousand square feet of dining, another 4,500 of kitchen fridge and stuff. But if you look at this in terms of square footage, this thing is more a gaming entertainment center than it is even of a restaurant. And what we can say is, here's some building elevations of what the exteriors are going to look like. It's a nice-looking building with a nice canopy entrance in the front. What we can say is, the existing mine shaft brings in between 8,000 to 10,000 people per week, and this is down in Hartford. Hartford is a relatively small community. To bring that in, you know you're drawing from distances, all right? So, here are some more pictures of the gaming room where you can tell what he's looking at is a $3 million investment worth of games to putting into this sort of gaming room. So, the other site that we're looking to deal with is the J.C. Penney, Miles Kimball Building. This is Tyler Riley of Extreme Customs. So, his business is dealing with custom wheels and rims and all things detailed in terms of automotive stuff, and the reality is that a large portion of his business is doing stuff via online sales. So, it's almost a tech business, per se. So, he wants to renovate the J.C. Penney and Miles Kimball Building. Here are the elevations here. This is a gentleman who has been in Oshkosh, I believe, operating, I think he had said roughly 2010 is when he started out on Jackson Street, and he doesn't have enough space now, so he wants to upgrade. So, he's proposing to do this at this particular site. Yeah. So, one of the issues here is, everybody is going to acknowledge in the room, we're talking about Highway 41, we're talking about potentially doing a restaurant-entertainment-center thing here, and the question is, what, what is the need here? And all I want to say on this particular slide, I was going to spend some time on it, so the stat geeks in the road would be happy, but we're going to go in and do a full-fledged market analysis to determine what his sales are likely to be here in Oshkosh. We haven't done it yet, but here's the methodology, all right? It's all good, fine, fun stuff. I hope you take some time and potentially read it, or if you have any questions, I'd love to tell you how we'll do it all. Next steps for development. Well, we got to complete this market study that I just glossed over there. There's some more engineering and stuff that we got to do for storm water, and that's going to impact financial implications here. We're talking large dollar figures for that sort of stuff. We were hoping to be able to apply for an idle sites grant through the WEDC, to be able to handle some of this stuff. We were told a week and a half ago that maybe there isn't funding there for this particular year, but we could still apply and hopefully get some assistance for next year, so we intend to pursue that, too. There are all these agreements and stuff that are going to happen, have to happen between the parties if we have common storm water management, if we leave the sewer laterals in place. We've got to work all that sort of stuff out. And then, once we have the actual market study in hand and the amount of money that maybe these guys could make, we will fold that into a sort of TIF analysis to try to validate the fact that they actually need it in this particular case. Again, this isn't complete at this stage, but it's what we have yet to do. So, I'm going to try to give you my case for support here, and the first thing that I want to do is address what people are questioning about this. What have we heard, you know? We have...
Mr. Hess, how much time, more time do you need?
I need like four more minutes, I think.
Counsel?
It's fine.
Yes.
So, I want to address the arguments. First, should we support TIF along Highway 41? Here's what I'd say. When I'm talking to people about this, typically I come up with that there's this implicit assumption that the economics of Highway 41 are such that you shouldn't need it, and at face value, it seems legitimate, but I could point to and say, well, okay, then why did J.C. Penney's go out? Why did Staples go out? The reality is that what we should be doing, rather than making generalized claims that we need it, is we just make sure that we got accurate documentation of the need and that we accurately reflect what the economics are of this particular project, and that's what we're proposing to do. The other thing that I would say about that is, this isn't new or unique in this area. We can point to NINA, that they had their TIF number seven there in 2012, where basically what they were substantially doing was supporting the development of strip mall for festival foods. So, those would be my counter arguments to, do we need to support TIF along Highway 41? Other arguments that I've heard is, should we be using TIF to support another restaurant? Well, I would argue first, the TIF here is supporting the entire district. It's not just supporting a restaurant, per se. Next, I would argue very strongly that the mine shaft isn't just a restaurant, but it's an entertainment district. If you look at it by square footage, it's more of a game room than it is a restaurant. If you look at it by the expenses that they're spending, it's more of an entertainment facility than it is a restaurant. If you look at their existing mine shaft in terms of profitability, it's more of an entertainment facility than it is a restaurant. So, the mine shaft even itself isn't just a restaurant. And I get that there's an argument of, well, there are other restaurateurs here in Oshkosh that are concerned about this. And what I would argue is this, look, when I'm taking my fiancee out on date night on Thursday nights, I am picking a Fratello's, I am picking a Beckett's. I'm not going to be picking a game room, that the game room is to entertain the kids. It is grandparents coming and picking up my kids and taking them over there and having fun. I would argue that there's going to be some overlap, there's no question about that, but substantially the people that are going to go visit a mine shaft are likely substantially from most of the restaurateurs that we have here in Oshkosh. This is a new and unique thing that we just don't have in Oshkosh. So, impediments to development. If you're proposing to do something like this, I'll tell you, if I'm doing apartment buildings, a developer can typically get 80% loan to value. If you're doing something like this, you're going to be lucky to get 50% loan to value. Mr. Masters here is proposing a $16 to $17 million project, and the bank might be willing to give him, they've kind of said to him last night, we're good to go on $8 million. That's an awful big impediment for a typical developer to get over, to bring something like that to town. And then, there's all these agreements that this is across an entire site, there's three different parties that we got to hash out. So, then I'll talk about benefits to the community. Look, this is a blighted area. It has been sitting mostly vacant for a long period of time. It's long a major arterial, a major entryway right next to the EAA. This is something that I think we want to address. In fact, I think two summers ago, when you guys had a TIF workshop, you guys talked about, hey, maybe the city should initiate a city-initiated TIF to designate this particular site to get something in there that you wanted. It shows that you guys had interest in it. Is this what you want? I hope so, but it shows that you guys have considered this before. I would argue that this is providing a family-focused entertainment facility. If I look at what my kids have gone to for birthday parties over my time as a dad, we've gone to Badger Sports Park, we've gone to Funset Boulevard, we go to the Trampoline Park, all those things are in Oshkosh, or not in Oshkosh, are in Appleton. We don't have something here in Oshkosh for families to take their kids to for birthday parties, and we're looking at putting something in here specifically to deal with that. The other thing is, we're going to be addressing all these site-specific issues that I talked about in the beginning there, the 2.5 to $3 million. Somebody's going to have to deal with it, and we think with this, we could. Then we want to retain existing businesses. We've got Mr. Riley here that's got 34 people employed. He's looking to add another 10. These are all jobs that come with benefits. He's looking to add another 10 next year if he gets into this, and then adding another 10 within the next five years, kind of thing. Mr. Masters is looking at employing a fair number of people. They are restaurant jobs, but they're good-paying restaurant jobs. He can explain more if you're interested in that. And then, finally, we're going to add roughly 13.25 million estimated additional value onto the tax rolls by doing this. So, here's a picture that I took of Aviation Plaza this afternoon. This, to me, sums it up. This is what we got there. Here's a picture of their sign. You got one business in there. It's intended for a lot more, and we've got gentlemen here that would like to do it, and we're looking for your support. So, questions?
Counsel, you have questions? Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Hess, could you go back to the slide with the schematic? I believe it was the second page in our handout.
What is it, what is it looking at?
Site specifics.
The development plan.
The development plan for the mine shaft?
Yes.
Okay. Try to get there.
So, kind of bouncing back and forth between the first ones that you showed. Yeah, they're with the water features, too.
This one?
Yep. That'll work for now.
Okay.
Okay, so, real quick, I guess, so, I'm assuming that all of the green on the edges there are, or in the periphery, would be for managing storm water. Is that, or is this just kind of a general...
This is more of a conceptual drawing.
Conceptual, okay.
The engineer has to go back and look at, what is it going to take to help more with the city stuff? Probably where that, what looks like a pond, that's probably roughly where things are going to be, but no, this is more of a conceptual drawing rather than...
But is the idea that this would not all be impervious surface, that you'd be adding back in at least 25% pervious surface? Has that been talked about?
I believe what is existing there, and Bob, maybe you could...
We're reducing impervious.
We're reducing...
Not ultimately that much.
Right.
Especially if the future expansions go on.
And then, my other question is regarding the jobs, good-paying restaurant jobs. Would you characterize those as family-supporting wage, family-wage-supporting jobs?
Yes, for sure. I mean, it could be a busy place.
Would you come up to the audience, please?
Well, you mean, certain jobs, the managerial jobs, will all be very high-paying. Anyone that works in the kitchen would be making, would be full-time and making very good money. I would say not many of them making less than $20 an hour and up from there, right? Managers making $30, $35 an hour, right? Waitresses even, you know, that, that seems like a position that doesn't maybe perhaps pay that well, but in a busy place pays very well, right? You know, you can have, there's actually, we have career waitresses that, you know, make a substantial living, you know, just waiting tables. Bartenders making great money, right? You know, we have maintenance, cleaning, right? You know, we have just all of the different areas, but there really isn't any, maybe even, even down to our dishwashers, you know, and that would be more of a part-time position, but would make pretty good money, maybe in that $13 to $15 an hour range, so. And it would be about 200 jobs.
200 total?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does Counsel have any other questions?
I'll wait until I see a application.
I do have one question from Mr. Robbie, and I think we touched on this, not Mr. Robbie. James, would you come up here, please?
I do have one. We briefly touched on this, as far as that piece of land years ago was a drive-in theater, correct?
Yes. Many years ago.
Many, many years ago. Black and white movies, no sound. What soil, soil conditions might be there? It had, I think it had gone from really, probably farmland to a drive-in theater. Is, do we really have a good field?
Yeah, I have not seen any, any geotechnical analysis out there, so I'm, I'm not sure what may or may not have occurred, but I believe it was a farm field before the theater, but I have not seen any analysis to really know what is out there.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Herman.
Mr. Robbie, maybe you can stay here just one second. And I don't have our 2019 approved CIP budget in front of me, and I don't know if anybody does. How much money do we have this year in the CIP for the Stringham Creek watershed? I know we put money into it last year for investment of storm waters flooding issues.
In, in the Stringham Creek watershed for this year, we have the Stringham outfall down in the Morgan District area in the CIP. I believe that's somewhere in the vicinity of 1.5 to 2 million, maybe a little bit. I don't remember the exact number, but we have the Stringham outfall in the CIP for 19.
Okay. And South Park?
South Park project is complete.
And that was part of the Stringham Creek watershed, too?
That is part of the Stringham watershed as well, yes.
So, we've done multiple things already in the Stringham Creek watershed area, right?
The only real project we've completed is the South Park project. The outfall that's in the 19 project, 19 CIP would kind of be a first project at looking at trying to upgrade that outfall from South Park down to the river. You know, so we've, we've started putting some effort into Stringham, but, you know, certainly there's a lot of work that needs to be done in that watershed.
Okay. If, if the city wanted to say, do general obligation bonds for some of this work versus adding it to a TIF, is that something that's possible? That might be in the long run better official than getting into a 20, 25-year TIF issue? And that was kind of, I'm waiting for the TIF for that.
Are you thinking general obligation, or are you thinking storm water revenue borrowing?
Well, one or the other. I mean, I think we do revenue borrowing, but it's 20-year borrowing versus maybe, you know, some of the TIFs have been going out to 25, 27 years. And in the city's interest, would it maybe be cheaper in the long run if we took on the infrastructure that's in the city's right-of-way versus incorporating it into a TIF financially?
I, I think we'd have to do a little bit more in-depth analysis. You want to jump in there, Alan?
If I could chime in, we could include city projects within the TIF district as public improvements that would help with the storm water management in Stringham Creek. Yes, we could do that.
Okay. Okay. Because I'm just looking at, in the long run, what's the most beneficial way? We know it needs to get done, because it doesn't meet our, our current codes and things like that. So I guess let's start with their application, other things, and be thinking outside the box of which is the best financial opportunity for the city/taxpayers to go on, if we move forward with a project like this.
Yeah, we haven't seen the application yet, but I would anticipate that. We've talked a great deal in general to everybody that any of these TIFs are expected to be a Pago-type of TIF, where they would incur the cost for these improvements and get reimbursed over time, that we would not be putting the, we would not be fronting the money unless it was some off-site improvements or something like that. But we haven't seen the application yet, so we don't have a very good feel for the exact improvements or...
Right. And that's kind of why I was going to kind of hold off, but as long as the mayor started a little conversational property. Mr. Hesk, if you want to add something to that, great.
Again, we don't have the entire analysis done.
Right.
But the conversations that we've been had, talking about, and if you look at the valuation that this is going to add, we've been looking at a 10-year sort of payback with a five-year look-back clause to it, kind of thing. So that's the order of magnitude of what we're doing.
No, I, I think it's an exciting opportunity, and, and I'm glad to see that there's more than one property being engaged in this, this process, because that makes it much more interesting for me as a council member. Thank you.
Counsel Member Mugarauer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of questions, and most of it centers around the Masters property and, and that part of it. Mr. Hesk, you may be able to answer some of it. You guys may not want to answer some of my questions and may want to hold them until, until you potentially put in a, put in an application. I was going to jump around a little bit, so forgive me. You talked about family entertainment versus, versus restaurant, and trying to differentiate between the two, to, to make it more palatable possibly. You talk about square footage, talk about by expense and by profitability, but you don't touch on revenue. And that's generally how we, how we engage or how we determine what a business's true purpose is, is their revenue base, it's not any other feature. Is this a restaurant by revenue, or is this a entertainment facility by revenue?
I'll tell you this, I, I haven't had a long chance to look at everything. I looked at a few things, and one of the things that I could point to was, in terms of profitability, definitely you're bringing in more money off of the restaurant, or profit, off of the restaurant side. Mr. Masters might be able to, do you know if, if you're bringing in more revenue on the restaurant side, or the gaming side, or is it that?
More revenue, I mean gross revenue on the restaurant side. Profitability-wise.
But profitability-wise, it's...
The gaming.
Right.
Good. I'm just going to go to my big question, I guess. So when, when Mr. Masters purchased the property back, I know it, it was vacant in 2003, and I forget when it was, when, when you acquired the property. Zoning restrictions were in place at that time. Soil conditions were there at that time. Parking lots and driveways haven't changed since that time. Water and sewer laterals have been the same since that time as well. And while we have increased or changed our stormwater management policy, those issues would have been there as well, too. So, and you probably know where I'm going with this, but those situations existed when the property was purchased, and it was a good investment at that time. Why would it be now on the backs of the city taxpayers to assist in making this a more, a better opportunity for development?
Everybody takes risks when you get into a particular parcel, and you've got to do due diligence, you've got to find stuff out. My understanding is, the Public Service Commission's rules have changed on us relatively recently. So the water lateral issues...
Or the storm ladder, or the water laterals.
The water laterals, there's no doubt, he couldn't have predicted that, per se. But everything is, you get in, you have an initial intention, you try to put the deal together, and it doesn't necessarily come together. Then other people potentially come up and say, hey, I'm interested in buying this. So you consider other options. But at the end of the day, we're here now, we feel like we need some assistance here. We're hoping that it's going to be a brief assistance, so that it's, in large respect, more palatable, but we're going to bring a fair amount of valuation and a new project to this community that we just don't have.
Okay. One last question. Have we, has there been much engagement with the owners, with Rogan's, in regards to their parcel? Because obviously, looking at a potential plan, and it's very rough, I know it's very early, but you've got extreme customers who's looking to do something on the south end, you've got something on the north end, and obviously their parcel is in between, and as you pointed out, they are potentially caught in the middle between two potential developments, and they have no control over almost any of it.
So Mr. Rogan is in charge of a company that's, has 500 employees throughout a wide site. He's the guy I'm supposed to be getting a hold of. I have talked a fair number of times with the store manager, they realize what the issue is. Her sentiment was, they would like to have conversations to potentially get some benefit of maybe the TIF, I'm not exactly sure how that would work, or the idle sites grant, if somehow we can help alleviate a business owner that has been here, not doing anything wrong, but just all of a sudden gets hit with this. Now you've got a quarter million dollars worth of expenses, we'd like to try to help that out.
Good. That's all I got. Thank you for addressing this.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a question from Mr. Davis, then. So with a development like this, everyone always likes to think that, you know, they're going to be successful, but that's a really large potential facility, 35,000 square feet. If it would not do well and then become idle again, in your experience, what, I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, but could that be reused adaptively for other purposes, or would we end up with another big-box blighted thing on our hands?
Good question. Typically, the way I've seen other communities deal with that is have some kind of demolition requirement after a certain amount of vacant period of time, so it reduces the overall cost to the city to enforce the rules when it comes to maintaining vacant buildings. Off the top of my head, that's how I've seen other communities deal with that. We could write something into a development agreement that specifies that above and beyond general ordinance requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Just one question. Does that demolition include parking lot removal? I know there are communities that, they give a big-box, there are so many gears to get the parking lot going, too.
Yes.
Okay.
All structures, improvements.
Councilmember Herman.
Mr. Davis, and maybe this isn't the question for this time, but Rogan's is like a third-party to this entity, I guess. The application is actually, the other two potential developers, does Rogan's have to be into this, or can they say, no, we'll stay right where we are with what we got? Or are they going to be in a position where they actually have to be part of the application and part of the whole thing?
I, I think the council, as the final say is...
I mean, does our policy even involve that? Our TIF policy?
You can exclude parcels within a TIF district. That's going to be under the council's decision. That's a council decision at some point, which parcels you actually include. You wouldn't have to include Rogan's in this TIF district. That complicates, we didn't include Lamaco in the TIF 21, because they didn't want to be in, but when it came to being redeveloped, we actually had to create a separate TIF for that piece. It's the only example I can think of off the top of my head. So we can exclude them, and you can hope nothing happens with Rogan's, that they would actually come in for a TIF in the future, but I think one of the impediments for the redevelopment of this site is all the costs that are spread amongst three different parties, and how do you actually figure out the most efficient way to solve all the problems and then allocate those costs fairly? And I think that's what they're going to struggle with, and I think that's what anybody who owns these three properties in this very visible spot are going, going to have to deal with, and there's no easy solution.
Okay. So that being said, because of what we were being shown by Mr. Hesk on site-specific issues with stormwater management, they could, they technically could go forward with the mine shaft and with the other car dealership and that with a separate TIF and exclude Rogan's if Rogan's didn't want to be part of this, correct? And we can't force Rogan's to upgrade to, because they're going to all have all the stormwater management and the water laterals and everything, yet one property won't be in compliance, correct?
Now you're getting into an area, I might have to ask Mr. Godey to explain what would trigger the events for Rogan's to have to upgrade, I think.
So I, I'm just thinking, you know...
But I think in general, it's all served by sewer and water that's basically one big complex.
Because I know from the emails Mr. Roloff sent us, it said, really, the whole site is not compliant.
Correct. It's all intertwined together, so if you change one part here, you could easily have an impact on the Rogan's.
Rogan's would certainly have to upgrade their water service to separate off of the system that's out there if something were to proceed with these other two parcels. So they would have some cost implications, because they would need to upgrade that to be in compliance with PSC regulations.
Okay. My opinion is that that's what these folks need to work on together, and I think it's a bit...
Correct, and that's where, just kind of getting, wanting to make sure that everybody understands that it could go forward, and yet, even if Rogan's don't want to be part of the TIF, they could have some financial implications if the project goes forward. Okay. It's good, you know? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Robbie.
If there are no further questions from the council, thank you, Mr. Hesk. Thank you for making the trip up here from Hartford in this rather typical winter weather, so.
Ah, they snowmobile up, I'm sure.
They do.
There you go.
Next, we have a public hearing, which is Resolution 19-71, and because there may have been people who wanted to speak to this resolution or this public hearing, I would look to put it off to the next council meeting, so we need a motion...
My suggestion, Mr. Mayor, would be to open the hearing, and then instead of closing the hearing, just continue the hearing to the next meeting, so that we can let residents know. I, I don't think anybody's here tonight, and I don't know if anybody came to the, one person came to the early meeting, but certainly if, given the circumstances surrounding this evening, I think it'd be more appropriate to continue the hearing, but you can open the hearing, that's, it's, tonight, we're supposed to open it, but you don't have to close it tonight, and that's the suggestion I would make.
So I'll read through it the usual three times, and then we'll move on to...
Yep.
Citizen statements, all right. Public hearing, Resolution 19-71 requires three readings. Approved final resolution for special assessments for concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, impurves new and rehabilitation, closed prims, driveway apron, sanitary sewer main and laterals, new and relay, water main and laterals, new and relay, and storm sewer mains and laterals, new and relay, relating to contract number 19-05, Oregon Street, West 16th Avenue to West 21st Avenue. Second reading for Resolution 19-71, approved final resolution for special assessments for concrete paving, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, new and rehabilitation, driveway aprons, sanitary sewer main and laterals, new and relay, water main and laterals, new and relay, and storm sewer mains and laterals, new and relay, relating to contract number 19-05, Oregon Street, West 16th Avenue to West 21st Avenue. Third and final reading, reading for Resolution 19-71, approved final resolution for special assessments for concrete pavement, asphalt pavement, sidewalk, new and rehabilitation, driveway apron, sanitary sewer main and laterals, new and relay, water main and laterals, new and relay, storm sewer mains and laterals, new and relay, relating to contract number 19-05, Oregon Street, West 16th Avenue to West 21st Avenue. That's the third and final reading, and we will then continue this at the February...
Do we need a motion to leave it open? Yeah, that's what I thought. I'll make a motion to lay over the public hearing, keeping it open until next council meeting, which would be...
28.
February, no.
26.
26.
26.
February 26, 2019.
Second.
Would you please take the roll?
Paul Mary? Aye. Mugarauer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie, five.
Next, we have citizen statements to council. Pam, did anyone register?
No one is registered.
All right, then we'll move on to consent agenda items. These are items of routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll-call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that it be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Pam, did anyone register?
No one is registered.
I would look for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Mugarauer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one, I guess, comment. It's probably from Mr. Roloff, as well as Public Works. 19-79, the agreement with the state to, for rebuilding of Highway 21. It's more of a communications thing, and trying to get out ahead of this as much as possible. Obviously, they're looking at early 2020, and it's a six-month project. As much information as possible out to the people in Oshkosh, as much in advance. Yeah, I can't stress it enough.
That's why we're talking about it now.
I think that's my only comment, is just to stress communication on this one.
Yeah, the DOT usually has a communication plan, and it starts with the local officials' meeting, which was recently held, which is a part of where this agreement stemmed from.
That's my only comment on that.
The bridge is going to be closed for about five to six months, first part of next year.
It's a long stretch.
The more we can remind people, the better. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. That actually just got answered, because I was going to ask, are we going to have an extended bridge closure? So, all right, that's it.
Councilmember Herman.
Thank you, Mr. Robbie. Just follow-up on that. Reconstruction, the road's going to be closed, but is the bridge going to be in the open position, that boat traffic can get through the bridge? Or what's the status of that for the boating community?
The construction project will start well before navigation season. I do believe during navigational season, the bridge will either be open or be operating. They do have a lot of rehabilitation and mechanical work they are doing. Some of the additional work that the city has requested as a part of the project is on the west-east side, the pavement just off the bridge is in fairly rough condition, so we're asking them to do some pavement work as well to improve the approach, and so certainly there will be, you know, that work as well, but, you know, they will have to maintain navigation.
Okay. So whatever, if there will be interruptions, I'm sure there will be at times, maybe during the week, that we maybe stay in touch with our marinas up and down the river? Because most of the boats that need the openings come from the marinas in the Oshkosh area.
Yeah. We were told that they were navigational, would be fully operational at the beginning of the season, so May 1.
Okay, very good, thank you.
If there are no further questions, would you please take the roll?
Paul Mary? Aye. Mugarauer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie, five.
There are no items removed from the consent agenda, which takes us to one laid-over ordinance, which is Ordinance 19-84, amend room tax ordinance. Pam, did anyone, anyone register?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Would you please take the roll?
Paul Mary? Aye. Mugarauer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie, five.
We have two pending ordinances. The first is Ordinance 19-85, approved zone change from suburban mixed-use district in prims SMU closed prims to suburban mixed-use district with planned development overlay in prims SMU-PD closed prims at 2020 South Kaler Street. Plan commission recommends approval. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Would you please take the roll?
Paul Mary? Aye. Mugarauer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carrie, five.
Next is Ordinance 19-86, approve amendments to Chapter 19, Parks and Recreation of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor Pal Mary.
Mr. Mauer, please. Just a couple of things here. You and I already spoke about the working in the part about the allowing the amplified sound past 10:00 p.m. So I guess we have some wording, just a little bit of wording difference between what's in the resolution and what's in the ordinance. So in the resolution, it says allows amplified sound past 10:00 p.m. with council approval. Maybe it's not a big deal. Perhaps Ms. Lawrence and Lawrenson may want to comment on that, but then in the ordinance, it says that amplified sound is not allowed past 10:00 p.m., except with council approval. So I, are we okay with that, Ms. Lawrence, and that they?
I'm not sure what resolution you're referring to.
My apologies.
1986, but you're talking about Chapter 19 of the parks, right?
Right.
Yes, 1986.
Right, that's the ordinance. What resolution? You said in the resolution, it says one thing. In the ordinance, it says a different, and I'm not, I'm not clear what resolution we're talking about.
Okay. So on 1986, approve amendments to Chapter 19, Parks and Recreation of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code, where we talk about allowing amplified sound past 10:00 p.m. with council But in the ordinance itself, it says it's not allowed past 10:00 p.m. Looking on page three, Chapter 19, unless permitted by council approval. Are we okay that it just, it's a little bit flip-floppy, it says the same thing?
I think that, what section are you referring to?
I'm sorry.
I see the page three reference, I'm just not sure where the other reference is. I'm sorry.
All right, so.
Was it the memo?
I'm looking at the, I'm sorry, the ordinance first reading, second reading. It's the format of the resolution on page 175 in our packet. Please take notes.
You mean the ordinance, that's, that's.
The ordinance itself.
Okay. So what section?
Under Section 3, under publication notice.
Oh, in the publication notice. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
I was not following what you were looking at.
And maybe it's just a.
It's just semantics. They're both saying the same thing.
That was my, sorry. So, Mr. Mauer, then the other, just a couple of questions, and that is regarding the regulated activities in Section L. It specifies no person shall engage in any athletic contest game or activity unless it's a specific designated area or for that activity. So are we just going, we're specifically speaking to golf, tennis, or archery? That doesn't prohibit somebody from playing soccer on a field that's not necessarily a soccer field, right?
No.
So this is just a clarifying question.
Yeah, and that section, we aren't recommending any changes, but really what it's doing is pointing out some of those activities that are a little more dangerous. Archery, you don't want to have people out there at Menominee Park hitting golf balls and trying, or not trying, but injuring people, so those are more specific examples for that.
Right, okay, thank you. And then you and I also talked about the reservation of the other park facilities under Section N. Are there any limitations that the Parks Department does with regard to someone making those reservations? So, for example, tennis courts or pickleball courts or things like that, can someone make theoretically a reservation for every week at the same time for the entire season? Or are there any limitations, or is that just kind of on a case-by-case basis?
We have had in the past, the Recreation Department does offer primarily youth lessons at a couple of the parks, South Park and on the past Menominee Park, and they will reserve those for Monday through Fridays from nine in the morning till noon possibly, so we have had that. At the Parks Board, when we had the pickleball discussion as far as rental of those, it was generally understood that we would not rent more than two of the pickleball courts at any one time because we only have four courts throughout the park system. We do have other tennis courts throughout the park system.
So it's not the case where somebody else might be playing, and they're going to come get booted off unless it's a reserved court, right? There's still other courts for play.
That is correct. Yes, and as we spoke, at our park shelters, we have a little kiosk that shows weekly reservations. We'll have that at each of the tennis and pickleball courts as well.
Okay, great. Thanks for sharing that. And then one last thing, and that is on the zoo entrance fee. Section 19-5.1 says the director of parks may establish certain times during the year that there will be a charge to enter the zoo. I had been asked about that one, saying that the, the community was under the impression that that's supposed to be free based on some donations that have been made in the past.
Correct. Daily general admission for the zoo, but we do have special events. Easter egg hunt, we'll have some events possibly with the Zoological Society, whether there will be an admission charge for that special event.
For special events, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
If there are no further questions, would you please take the role?
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Mogarower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried five.
We have two new ordinances. There'll be no action taken on either one this evening. The first is Ordinance 19-87, approve amendments to Chapter 5, Article 3, Section 5-18, special events, marches, and public assemblies. Pam?
No one is registered.
Next, we have Ordinance 19-88, amend Chapter 4, alcohol beverages, ordinance pertaining to general requirements for licensing and use of license.
No one is registered.
We have two new ordinances. The first is 19-89, approve zone change from heavy industrial in perims HI, closed perims to heavy industrial with a planned development overlay, perims HI-PD closed perims, north of the railroad tracks, east-west of Cleverill Road and State Highway 91 intersection, a portion of southwest industrial park. Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
No.
No new ordinance.
Action.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two readings.
Ordinance 19-90, approve request to attach the city, to the city from the town of Nikaimai, so a Dersky voluntary attachment. Pam?
No one is registered.
All right. Resolution, we have new Resolution, three of them. Resolution 19-91, approve general development plan and specific implementation plan for an auto sales service facility and storage for property located at 2175-2185 South Kohler Street. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Mogarower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Mr. Birch, I just have a question regarding some of the discussion I know you guys had at the Plan Commission, as well as some of the parts in here, specifically the signage, and it sticks out at me a little bit, and I just like your guidance and maybe can help these gentlemen with, with what they'd like to have the building look like. The applicant has provided, and I quote in here, "The applicant has provided building signage plans that significantly exceed the maximum allowed sign area on the south and the west. They provide no justification for the larger signs, and they'll need to come back with a new proposal to meet, to meet, to meet our code and get a permit." It stems from the color of the paint that they're looking to use. Does this not, some of that areas I was listening in, and I just want a clarification on parts of this, so if you could address that for me.
No, it wouldn't be the color of the paint, it would be a logo or any, any specific signage that would be considered the signage. The paint wouldn't be considered the signage.
It's not, and so that, I'm happy to be wrong. It just sounded like part of the discussion centered around, it would be the northernmost, what would be J.C. Penney entrance, or the one on the far right here, that sounded like, since it stood out, since it was multiple colors, that this all part, seemed as part of some larger square footage of the signage.
No, if you look at, if you look at the lower drawing, you'll see a, you'll see the logo that's in there that you see. That's, that's what puts it over, over the square footage that's allowed.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor Pal Mary.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Birch, question regarding the base standard modifications the Plan Commission was recommending for exceeding the 125% parking maximum. What would that do to the impervious surface area, and what, what is our suggested max on that impervious surface area in that location?
In the district, I don't have what the requirement is, but it's, right now, it's not changing anything because the status quo is remaining. They're not, they're not making the, they're not making the parking lot any larger, they're just getting a base standard to reuse it.
Okay, I'm a little confused because it says to exceed 125%.
Because they're already exceeding it, so there's already too many spaces there.
Oh, okay.
And it has not been occupied in a year or so, so it's a non-conforming parking situation.
Okay.
So we're just, we're just addressing it through the PD at this point.
All right, thanks.
Don't go away. Just one question, this is refreshing my memory. Wasn't there discussion at the Plan Commission about a little something on the west side of the building facing 41, so you kind of dress it up a bit? I don't recall if it was logos or just something to give a little more impact because of the traffic on 41. You're shaking your head, so.
If you could go.
Would you just answer my question?
Will you come up here, so the microphone picks you up? Sorry.
It just, it did come up recently, that obviously divisional, just coming to town on 41 going north, getting captureable, but yes, it did come up.
Okay, thank you.
Staff, we're okay with doing something to dress up that side of the building. It wouldn't be an issue on our side. We'd just be looking at it from a code perspective. We run into a code issue, then we'll be back through the plan development process.
Good. If there are no further questions or discussions at the council, would you please take the role?
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Mogarower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried five.
Next is Resolution 19-92, I'm sorry, 19-92, approve specific, specific implementation plan for development of a bank at 2020 South Kohler Street. Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Just one comment for people who may not know where 2020 South Kohler Street is. That would be in that vacant land, if you will, that's pretty much across from Father Kires.
Nope, this is, this is the mobile station that was on the corner of.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, okay.
Associated Bank.
Thank you.
Associated Bank Development.
Correct.
If there's no further discussion, would you please take the role?
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Mogarower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried five.
Next is Resolution 19-93, approve update to rental housing inspection program, district map, and free schedule. Rental Housing Advisory Board recommends approval. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Would you please take the role?
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Mogarower?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried five.
Next, we have council discussion, direction to city manager and future agenda items. The first are some workshops. The first is rescheduling the joint meeting with Oshkosh Area School District.
No date or time set yet. I know Ms. Moran and Dr. Cartwright's administrative assistant are trying to work out something, so we'll probably be polling you soon once we are close to a date.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have facility workshop, February 13, Room 404 in City Hall. 5:30 will be bolt presentation for park facility, and 6:30 will be FGM presentation for City Hall. Can everyone make that date?
I'll be there from, for the first part, for the bolt presentation. I will have to cruise at the beginning of the City Hall when I've got a previous commitment, but thanks to Oshkosh Media, I will catch up shortly after.
All right. I'll be there.
Yes.
Next, we have Town Hall with legislators and common council meeting February 25, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at fighter station number 15, which is on Court Street.
I'll be providing the council with a draft agenda this week in your packet, so you can give us some ideas. We've gotten a lot of good ideas, so they're in there, so if anything else comes to mind, might as well, I think some of the legislators would like to know in advance, but it's budget season, so I think that'll be a big theme of what's going on.
Can you confirm, do we have the two or three local?
Right now, we've been told that all three legislators will be able to attend.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have proposed ordinance regulating electronic vaping. Councilmember Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I think all of council received an email from Tim Bonson, referenced this issue. It's a concern for quite a few citizens in the Oshkosh community. Also, we received, I think it was yesterday, an email from the Rethink Youth Coalition, which is part of the Winnebago County Health Department, from Lindsay Erickson, and she had a lot of good information in the email, and I hope council took some time to look it over. And then I also in person talked to Gene Pollak, who's an instructor at Oshkosh North High School, very involved with, with youth, and he, he states that it's, it's a, it's becoming a real problem at Oshkosh North, and he believes throughout the school district, that the youth are getting heavily involved with this vaping, and they would like to see the city of Oshkosh move forward with an ordinance prohibiting e-cigarettes to minors, much as Nina has done in the Valley, and I believe there's been some other communities that have gone forward with ordinances preventing youth from getting involved with e-vaping. So my reason for putting it on the agenda is hoping that there'd be enough council support to give direction to the city attorney to draft a tentative ordinance that we could look at to move this forward and get it on the books, which I think is something very important. I would think that the school board, not weighing in on it, but I would think the school board would support something like this, if the city moved forward.
City Attorney Lawrenson.
We're already working on an ordinance.
Okay.
It came up earlier this winter, and I know Amy Van den Hogen from our office has been working with.
Okay.
Chief Smith to review it. I'm not exactly sure where they, they are at the moment on it, but they, they have been working on it. If you could share the emails with Amy, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, it sometimes gets a little hard because we get the email on all council web, and you, sometimes you can forward them to staff.
Yeah.
But when we contact citizens, we actually have to go back. We can't forward it off of their email. I don't know if that's something that can be addressed.
We'll make note of that.
But we have to put the email address separately and do like a separate email. At least on mine, my tablet's been acting weird, which it's been doing that since I got it. This is a backup. But anyways, I cannot forward, or when I get an email from a citizen and it says all council web forum, if I try to respond from that email, it kicks it back.
Okay.
And I have to then go down to their personal email, put it in there, and then type my response back to them, so it's a little cumbersome. But on that other thought, just remind council that last summer, Rethink came forward with a wanting us to ban smoking in the parks, and we thought it was a little, the police department thought it was a little cumbersome to do that with all the different activities and things down there. So we made it a parks rule. And I know it's been discussed as the parks liaison, council liaison to the parks board. It went pretty well this summer. There were no real big issues. But I do think, and most of us as parents know, that this is a big issue, and I think I think we'd like to see something come forward with it. So I thought I'd put it on the agenda, not knowing that the city attorney's around on top of things as usual. So, very good.
I would also add, our police school liaison officers have pointed out that the dilemma they have is that there's a school rule against it, but the police department doesn't have any enforcement, so it's only a school violation. So I think they see the value in that.
Okay.
So there's there's a lot of different folks that are really advocating for this. So I think these are all coming together.
Coming together at a good time.
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Deputy Mayor Pal Mary?
Thanks, Mayor. Just two points on that and responding regarding the new format that we're receiving, which is really great because I think we're getting more emails from the public because of that all council email. However, I did reach out to IT about the same issue.
Okay.
And asked if there was a way that we could respond to people. When you submit your all council inquiry, please provide your email address so that we can respond to you. And Mr. Newman said that if they did not, it was an optional feature. That's where we kind of aren't able to respond, but in relation to that. But the other piece of this is I wondered when we were looking at the parks update or revisions to the ordinance about that same thing, because there is the no smoking, but it doesn't necessarily specifically say vaping. So my question would be for Ms. Lawrence, and if that were to pass, then we would just update that to include.
That'd be citywide. The vaping would be a citywide issue.
With the.
And I'm going to be honest, I wasn't in on the conversation that Amy had with the chief. My understanding was it was focused on the schools.
Oh.
But I can check on that.
Okay.
What they were exactly looking for. And I don't believe we made any changes to the smoking part of chapter nineteen. We just left that we were dealing with other issues in there. So we can take a look at it and make a recommendation.
Okay. All right, Gates.
Just going back to the vaping, I've talked to some parents who have high school age kids who have experimented, and they said, which I didn't realize, and I've talked to some healthcare people, that the damage this can do to vocal cords at a very young age, you can't turn it around. So there's there's the consequences. I mean, it's right up there with smoking. So, Mr. Herman?
So just to go back to that, if if right now they're looking at it just on school property type thing, I think we would want a citywide ordinance that no matter where they are, and then and then if we have to adjust our park ordinance to even mention.
I'm just, I don't know.
I know. Right. But I'm just saying if we have to, we can we can add a sentencing.
We had a different take on it, because my take was that it would be citywide.
Citywide, correct. That's what I that's what I want. I don't want just on.
I think that's kind of the, I've seen a lot of head.
And that maybe it just came from the liaison officers initially.
Right, and then not conflict with our park rule. If we need to make some park adjustments, I'm sure you can work with Mr. Maurer, bring something forward to Parks Board for recommendation.
Okay.
So that youth would not be allowed to eat cigarette at a, you know, park event, even though it's only a park rule at this point, still be a violation of city ordinance if they did that.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Next is the creation of a mayor's youth council, and that is mine. This is something I've talked about, I think, since last fall. I've met with the superintendent of schools and others. What we're looking for is, you know, the the youth of this community are the future of this community. Our hope is that the kids that, you know, this is their hometown, that they may go away to school after high school. We'd love to have them come back, become part of the community. And I think one of the ways to get them really interested in the community is get them involved in the community at the high school level. We've had discussion, I've had discussions with mayor from other communities, Wauwatosha, Wisconsin Rapids, they have programs. While we've talked to some high school kids, they love the idea, how can we sign up? I said, we've got to do some homework here first. But I think it's time to really get the young people involved in our community. They have them, so they know they have a role in the city today, and they have a role in the city going to the future. So we're at the point now, it's it's been, everyone just loves the idea. And we're at the point now that we have to give direction to city manager Roloff to begin preparing an ordinance for council approval. So, Deputy Mayor Pal Mary?
Thanks for bringing that up, Mayor. I was, I I've heard you mention that a couple of times, and I was curious. So what would the youth council do? And would they, are you expecting that that would be some form of advisory type council? And or, I guess, yeah, I'd like to know more.
As is held handle other cities, they're very involved. They have, it's the students themselves determine their projects. I know in Rapids, they were involved, either the rehab of a pool or a new pool, but the students set their agenda. One thing I've discussed, a way to explain this, is when it comes time to determine what to do with the remainder of the Lake Shore site, the kids would be involved in this capacity as the council. What high school kids want in a park is far different than someone my age or in between. So they would be an advisory council. There would be adult mentors on this program, both council members, I think we've talked about, they have someone from the school, obviously. We're at the point now, we've determined the number of students, but yes, they would have input issues for the city. We've got bike and pads. Have we ever asked a kid about bike and pads? Have we ever? No. So we're looking for input from the kids. It's like the Landmarks Commission. We are an advisory commission. The plan commission has a little more teeth into it. So we we want input from the kids. They've got to feel they're part of the community. It's their hometown, and when they've finished school, if they stay here, if they go away to school, go away to the military, come back to their hometown and become an active part of the community. So we're defining what they'll be doing. Again, they'll set the agenda. We're not going to tell them what they should do.
My, excuse me, my understanding is that we would prepare an ordinance which would, I think, formalize it as opposed to just having it loosely formed. It would be a border commission, not unlike anything else, where the mayor would nominate, council would approve. There's some information that the mayor and I, when we talked to the mayor of Wisconsin Rapids at the league conference, that's where we initially heard this discussion. So, and the mayor of Wauwatosha also said it was done by ordinance. So it's pretty much like your other boards and commissions.
And we we seem to forget that we have Lourdes and Valley Christian in town, and they would be part of it. We've got four high schools. We're pattering pattering some of that after Wauwatosha, which has a far more high schools than Wisconsin Rapids. But we're right now, we're looking at twenty-four students from all four high schools. We have to get, we have to sit down now with the principals and the superintendent, does this make sense, how we're doing these numbers? But, you know, as I said, in these other communities, the kids set their agenda. It's what they want to see in their community. Council member Mugarower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to say, I think it's great. I think it's a very interesting idea, and I definitely myself want to see more information. But you're right, whether it's the parks, you know, when talking about Rainbow Memorial Park and the the Lake Shore there, bike and pads on, you know, sustainability and things like that, you're right, their 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 input isn't being received. They can choose to participate now, don't get us wrong, but a more proactive approach is definitely something that I would definitely support and be interested to see what what can come of it. So excellent idea.
All right, thank you. Council member Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. Off of Mr. Council member Mugarower's comments, you know, Rethink Youth Coalition has brought several things forward. As I mentioned, just briefly on the e-cigarette thing, last year was the the smoking in the parks. They brought some other health and safety things forward. So the youth in the community, when they band together, have a pretty good voice. And I think as we move forward with our strategic plan in the city, and even as we do some of these park plans and some of these other plans in our neighborhoods, getting them engaged in some of that discussion will energize the kids, but only not only energize the parents because their kids are getting involved in interests that are to them, which is a reason why a lot of families move to a community, is for not just school and jobs, but it's other activities. As was presented in a presentation tonight, we don't have a youth zone kind of thing, and maybe this would be another opportunity for the youth to weigh in on some things they'd like to see come to Oshkosh.
Well, in the past couple of years, I have worked with a communities program from Oshkosh, with kids in the communities program, Oshkosh North, and then we're now working with global settings at Oshkosh West. And last Friday, District Attorney Christian Gossett and I made the presentation of the kids in this class, and I talked about this this program, youth council, how do we, how do we, you know, can we, how do we get involved type of thing? So these are bright kids, they're they're, you're right, they're very committed to the community now, and I think we've, this is a way to show them that your voice does really come in the future of your city. Deputy Mayor Pal Mary?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Well, I think that we often talk about how, you know, we we do want to make decisions that are supportive of our future generation, so it makes sense to absolutely have them engaged and and part of the conversation. I guess I would like to say, like to see a little more information about what, whether or not that's in the form of a formal board and commission, or if that's, you know, some kind of branch of our strong neighborhoods and G H and I activities as well. It seems like there might be multiple ways that 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 could be accomplished, but I I absolutely would welcome youth because we are making decisions that impact them, and they're going to have to carry on with. So thank you for the idea.
You're welcome. And thank my fellow mayors. They've been very helpful in guiding us through that. They've done a lot of the heavy lifting for us. But I've had discussion at league conferences, and all of a sudden mayors just start to gather and talk about it. With that, you've got direction and.
Yeah.
Once that's in place, and we'll we'll get together with the principals and superintendent to get this numbers resolved. And that's the biggest issue, is the number.
Thank you.
All right, next is the city's statements to council.
No.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mugarower, you have administration of city-sponsored social media pages.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had spoken last week, middle of last week with city manager Roloff and asked us to be put on. I've got a, I guess I've got a brief statement, but and I know city manager Roloff has done a little bit of preliminary work too, but I'll read this, and then hopefully we can maybe have a little discussion and give him some direction. Social media is an important and vital tool. It's a vital communications tool, whether it's private citizen, business, municipality, like the city of Oshkosh, it's fast and convenient, and it's a way to communicate and get your message out. Recently, a member of one of our boards and commissions, acting as the administrator for the board's Facebook page, took the liberty of posting her opinion, to me and editorial. Without proof or firsthand knowledge, she made an accusation that was unprofessional, and it was unbecoming of something the city of Oshkosh would or should endorse as an official communication. While it may seem minor to some, it should be it should be an eye-opener to most. It's in infractions like these that lead to much bigger problems. With little to no oversight, select members of our boards and commissions are basically acting as part of our communications team, a job for which they have potentially no background or ability to do. So therefore, I was requesting that city manager Roloff and his staff conduct a review of all the social media usage by our boards and commissions, and hopefully report back by the next council meeting, the following things. Who is authorized to administer these pages? Is the content appropriate for sharing? Are all our policies and procedures being followed? And then any revisions that they would suggest as well? I guess finally, on that point, let me be clear, I'm not attempting to stifle anyone's right to express their own personal opinion, but those things are just that, they're personal opinions. When you post under the banner of the city of Oshkosh, it better be true, accurate, and represent the greater good of this community. The people who view those messages see the city of Oshkosh name and logo, and it's inferred that that's official communication from the city. With that, that's my statement on social media usage.
I can just give a brief.
Roloff?
When it when it was brought to my attention, I asked staff to take a look at it and was able to do a quick review. There are two, maybe three arguably, of boards and commissions that operate their own, administer a social media page. The rental housing advisory board, the sustainability advisory board, and about, it's probably shared with the landmarks commission between a member of the landmark commission and the the staff liaison. We, the city does have a social media policy. It was adopted two years ago by the council, but it's more, it's related to internal. It's about, it's actually included in our employee manual. I don't have the authority to enforce that policy on a board or commission member. I only have the ability to enforce it on a city employee. So as I looked at it, I think there's, I think there's value into bringing those in-house. It does a couple of things, I think. Number one, it addresses what the page should be, and I'm just, I got one excerpt from our social media policy that I think kind of lays it out. The purpose of this site, meaning the a social media page, is to present matters of public interest in the city of Oshkosh, including information useful to its many residents, businesses, and visitors. And it goes on, but that's essentially the core issue. And it, that's, that policy statement's consistent with our strategic plan, guiding principle about transparency. And so that's, that's essentially what the purpose of it is. I think it's appropriate for for staff to be administering those pages, and so I think it's more appropriate for me to take the lead on this and say, we should be taking it over. And it'll actually do another thing. It'll appropriately be with staff, who should be following direction from their various boards anyway. But it also then frees that person who you may or not, you may or may not agree with, they have the ability to express their opinions, which they're entitled to. If they're doing it under the auspices of the administrator of the site, it does make it a little awkward. And if it was a city employee, I would talk to that person about that, because it really should only be the the basic general information related to a border commission. Not all our boards and commissions have social media pages, but the ones that do, the staff that administer those, they're governed by by the rules that have been been established, written together by staff and approved by council. And I think it's probably a safer way to bring it in. I know the attorney's office spent a lot of time developing a policy to make sure that we're protecting rights of people to express interest. And in the two years since it's been adopted, there's a lot of information out there about social media posts, and are they public record, and do they need to stay in place? And our policy addresses things of personal attacks or rude, breaking the law type of things. Those things, we would have the ability to remove. But if someone has an opinion that that you or I might disagree with, that does not warrant any removal from the site, and that'll continue to take, that'll continue to be the case. So I happy to answer any questions you might have, but once it was brought to my attention, I took a quick look, Mr. Patrick and I, and Mr. Urban, who, it's, social media page was put together in administrative services, and we felt that was the appropriate thing to do.
Deputy Mayor Pal Mary?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of thoughts on this then. So if those three were to come back under staff responsibility, that would not preclude those boards and commissions from providing draft content for them to then publish in alignment with our policies, correct?
The way I look at it, and this is a very incomplete list, but I was, as I was gathering my thoughts for tonight, the staff liaison would post recent actions of the border commission in question with links to agendas, minutes, recent actions and policies, upcoming events and highlights of of past events, and then just general information to promote the transparency of the of that. So for example, if a board took an action that was recommending something to council, even though council hasn't adopted, it would be appropriate to say, the commission or board is recommending this to council, and what do you think, public? And certainly engage the public in providing input on that. And as long as they were following the rules that are pretty broad, they would be able to post and say, I agree or I disagree, and express their opinions.
And then there's also, from what I understand, some official pages can have all commenting turned off, correct? So that it's just a one-way push, sharing information rather than a platform for devolving into incivility, right?
We haven't done that, but, oh, Mr. Patrick, you must have struck.
This binder.
He was working on.
Wow, he's prepared.
I think you're right, but the purpose of our sites right now is to provide information and allow the the community to have dialogue. And I think that's what you're suggesting, and also, council member Mugarower. So we haven't exercised that option, but that is an option technically. I think, you know, to reiterate what city manager Roloff said, we wanted to provide an opportunity to moderate the site, administer the site, and then free those people up who do want to express their opinions, to feel like they can do that and not be burdened with the responsibility also of having to moderate the site. It's kind of a a conflict in a way. So, and I think that's what Mr. Mugarower was trying to express also.
Well, I'd just like to, I guess, also share that it can be a helpful tool, and sometimes it can also, you know, be a hijacked thread that becomes somewhat destructive or divisive as well, right? One of the things I think we as council members sometimes struggle with social media is we might be, you know, we might observe something that is a question, or someone bringing something to light that maybe they didn't send us an email, or they didn't call, but I think the public needs to know that we're not monitoring every single social media thread out there. And so the channels for asking your questions and getting policy-related information is to contact City Hall directly. We may or may not see, you know, these kinds of things coming up. And and so someone asking for information or documentation on a thread does not constitute a public records request, correct?
If it's on the social media page, just because you haven't read it, it's still, what we've read and seen is that it's still a public record. So, but it, one of the things we have in there, and I think what I'm going to do is, I'm going to throw you a copy of the social media policy, so you can refamiliarize with it. But one of the other comments, the city does not necessarily review all posted comment on a regular basis, and nor should we be.
Right.
Unless there was something that was pointed out that was, that we needed to address, you know, inciting violence or something like that, that would be inappropriate posting, that we would be able to remove that from the site.
And I would just add, I think it also says, once posted, the city reserves the right but assumes no obligation to delete submissions that are illegal, obscene, defamatory, threatening, invade privacy, or considered to be offensive to anyone, or may infringe upon intellectual property or. upon the intellectual property or copyrights of others." So there is some structure there that provides the opportunity for us to protect attacks on others, but you're right, it's intended to be an opportunity for people to express their thoughts, and, you know, administrators of that site, administrators of that site have to take that into careful consideration.
So that's, that's how I'm planning to proceed, and I'll get you a copy of the policy to refresh your memory about it.
Thank you, City Manager.
All right, thank you. Next is statements to council. Pam, did anyone register?
No one is registered.
All right, we'll move on to, if councilmembers don't have anything for statements, we've already made those. We'll turn it over to Mr. Roloff for your announcements and statements before we adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing that I didn't have on my list that I just wanted to remind the public, and council mayor may not have seen the post this afternoon, we did declare a snow emergency, it was effective at 6:00 PM. We wanted to make sure we had time to get the university to assist us in getting out to the students, because that's a, that's a big part of our social media outreach to get the word out. So it was declared as of 6:00 PM. Just to remind everybody, what that means is on even days, you park on the even side of the street, it starts at noon that day and goes till noon the next day. So you've got to park on the even side until noon tomorrow, and then it's an odd day, and it switches to the odd day of the street. The idea is, well, you're supposed to be off the streets from 2:00 to 5:00, 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM anyway, but when our crews are out, and Mr. Ewen informed us, he's going to, he's planned to be out at 5:00 AM tomorrow morning, so to finish up the work that still needs to get done. But that'll give them the ability over the next two days to get on either side of the street. And we felt it was appropriate and appreciate the feedback several councilmembers gave me on that issue. We were doing okay, but not great, and so we've got that going. So you see the snow emergency information there on the screen. In your packet, you have the Oshkosh Corporation update. Things are going well, even though they're closed in for the winter, but they're not glass closed in, but they're actively working on that. In your packet also, the memo informing you about the professional services agreement we have with Matrix Consulting, they were the group that did the police study, they also an arm of their company that does fire studies. We were generally pleased with what they did for police. Chief Stanley worked out an agreement with them through an RFP process, and we have that. There's a cooperative purchase of a folder stuffer for the IT division with us going to monthly mailings. We want to make sure our stuffer is fully operational, and so we've got that through a cooperative purchase. The donation report for 2018, we've got that update in there for you. I'm going to skip over 36, because I want to do that next to last. Movies and mascots, is this, are still going on, and we want to encourage people to attend that. I believe that's, let me just make sure I get the date squared away here in my packet.
February 23rd is the next one.
Thank you, yes, February 23rd. So, and that's over at the senior center, 5:00 to 6:30, and the movie begins at 6:30. So appreciate that. State of the City, just a reminder, is Monday, March 18th. Looking forward to all that. And then the text message issue that went on that didn't go very well, admittedly. We had been approached by our vendor at See Click Fix about doing an outreach to improve the number of people that we're subscribing to, to connect Oshkosh. And it sounded like a great idea, and I think it was at the time, but I don't think it got executed as well as it should have been. What we did was, excuse me, I want to make sure I've got this, oh, yeah. The idea behind it was sending out a text message to randomly to 5,000 people. There was a lot of concern that it was spam at the outset. I was in a room in a meeting where a quarter of the room got a text from the city, and all the eyes looked at me, and immediately people thought it was spam, so it really didn't go off well. We expressed our concerns to See Click Fix after they realized this, they cut the pilot program off. They chose us from throughout the country, and we were very proud that they thought highly enough of us to do it, but we were guinea pig, and sometimes it doesn't work out. And I encourage staff to try new things, to experiment, and sometimes they don't work out, and this is one of them. See Click Fix has sent us a letter of apology. You know, I put something in the newsletter, "We certainly apologize for any inconvenience that people may have experienced." People ask where they got the names from. They can get from the state, from the state voter registration list, and that's what they use. Some people put their cell phone as their contact phone, and that's why you get calls at home during the political campaign season. See Click Fix and us disagreed with their subcontractor that this was exempt from do-not-call list. We believe it should have been following do-not-call, they didn't, so we've chastised them accordingly. So failed experiment, we still love citizen engagement, but this was not one of those processes that went well. Certainly happy to answer any questions, but I do have, we have one more thing, but before I go to that, happy to answer any questions.
Mugerauer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Jake, would you mind putting the file up, the See Click file? This is a screenshot, if you haven't seen it, here's what he's talking about. This was forwarded to me by someone I know that had questions as to what they received. First of all, I want to make sure, I want to thank City Manager Roloff, he's owned this, from the moment I brought up to him, and I know, I think, several councilmembers and several people in the community did, he's taken ownership of it and expressed his disappointment with how it was rolled out, how it was received, and I think the entire thing with how it went. My main concern with this, and I know he pointed out where they got the numbers from, two things is, one, there is no option to opt out, and from what I read, that's required. Right from the FTC's Consumer Information Page, it lays that out, that there has to be an option to opt out. Two, text message spam is legal, right from them. It's legal to send unsolicited commercial email messages to wireless devices, including cell phones and pagers, unless the sender gets your permission. He talked about exemptions. Thankfully, the state government and federal government, they always exempt themselves, so in political campaigns, they can always ask for surveys and ask for donations, but this definitely was not one of them. And I just wanted to go on record in expressing my disappointment in how it was rolled out, and especially that they did not have the opportunity to opt out, which is required. That's all I got.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. Good catch, right? Maybe a little bit late.
Kind of.
So that oops hopefully will not discourage people from signing up for See Click Fix or Connect Oshkosh app, because it can make your interaction with the city much easier and faster than looking up an email or looking up a department. You can just take a picture and send a request, so hopefully that oops will not discourage people from signing up for the app. And hopefully we have seen some benefit from having that app in use. Mr. Robby.
Yeah, I just would like to add one thing. Certainly Engineering Division has seen a significant increase in the number of sidewalk shoveling complaints that are being sent to us through Connect Oshkosh. So there is a number of our residents that are using it to communicate with us.
We did have 61 people that signed up with it, but 61 out of 5,000, I don't know what kind of batting average that is, but that's well below the Mendoza line. That's all I have, but we do have.
One more thing.
One last thing, unless there are any questions, because Oshkosh Media has produced a new heavy metal segment, really highlighting the ice rescue boat. Jake, do you need time for me to talk while you get up there?
All right. The heavy metal series is highlighting equipment that the city of Oshkosh uses. In this case, the fire department's ice rescue boat was a good feature, very timely with the season and with the weather that we've been having, and.
But one comment to that.
Yeah, please, before he hits.
Who paid for the ice rescue boat? See Oshkosh didn't pay for it.
That's, that's correct, but.
Came from Winnebago County, just so you're aware.
He does bring that up in the video.
Okay, very good. Because we want to make do that they know where.
Great collaborations, we do appreciate that.
It was a public, private?
Or I mean.
Public, public.
Get together.
I'm a lieutenant with the City of Oshkosh Fire Department. We are here at Oshkosh Fire Department Station 15. Today, we're going to be talking about our Husky Airboat. This boat is owned by the Winnebago County Sheriff's Department, but primarily operated by the City of Oshkosh Fire Department. We use this airboat to respond to rescue calls during the winter months on Lake Winnebago when we have to go across ice to get people falling through the ice. This boat does not handle like a regular boat. It is a fan boat, so that means you don't have reverse or sudden braking abilities. Basically have to do a lot of sliding around to get where you want to go, and ice and wind conditions can change how the boat handles. The most important part about this boat is that it can travel either on solid ice or in water, and is able to transition between those two types of surfaces. So when we have to approach open water from a solid ice sheet, we simply slow down and let the boat basically slide into the water. We can then use a fan to propel the boat and the rudder to steer it. When we have to get back onto the ice, we simply nose the boat up to the edge of the ice sheet and apply a lot of throttle, and the fan pushes the boat right back up onto the ice. This boat was built in 2004 by Husky Airboats, has a 19-foot-long hull, and is 23 feet overall. It has a 5.7-liter V8 engine that is rated at 355 horsepower, weighs 2,900 pounds empty, and can transport 1,200 pounds of personnel or equipment. Most boats that have a rigid hull have fiberglass on the bottom, and then braces inside the boat called stringers. This boat does not have that because of the punishment it takes traveling over broken ice and many surfaces. So this boat uses a bonded Kevlar hull material with a system of airbags that are actually inflated to provide internal support that allows the boat to flex without cracking or breaking. The Winnebago system is very popular with recreational users in the winter, but there are many hazards too. The ice can be thin in the early part of the season or the late part of the season, and the lake always has a network of large cracks that have to be crossed. It's very easy for people to lose their position and fall through these hazardous areas. That's why it's important for us to have a response vehicle that can get to those areas. However, it's important to say the ice is never 100% safe on this system, so we encourage anybody who's going to use this system that's not familiar with it to contact local bait stores or the fishing clubs to find out what is safe and what is not safe to do on the lake. If you do fall through, it's important that you have your cell phone with you. If you call 911, your cell phone will transmit a signal that our dispatch center can use to locate you on the ice. We then turn that signal into GPS coordinates so that we can find you and get you as quickly as possible. Be sure to stay safe on the ice. We'd much rather have you be high and dry and enjoying ice fishing than in a life-threatening situation.
That's it, Mr. Mayor?
With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourned. Be safe going home.